I'll call the regular Bucyrus City Council meeting to order for December 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before you are the minutes from the December 3rd, 2024, regular council meeting. Does anybody have any questions regarding the minutes?
A motion to approve is presented.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers has made a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We did not all vote. Queen border.
Carolyn, you did not vote.
I said aye.
I watched you specifically, and you did not vote.
I could've swore I voted. Okay, aye. Where's your point of voting?
It passes.
Thank you.
Granting permission for visitors to speak. We have, Mr. Ken Long has pre-requested time to speak. Could you please come up to the podium, Mr. Long?
Good evening, everybody. Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. This is regarding a previously scheduled property maintenance committee meeting. Have some background information, I'll be really brief. The property maintenance ad hoc committee was formed on March 6th, 24. First organizational meeting was held on March 25th, 24. The second meeting was April 9th of 24. And then after that, there was one or two other meetings afterwards that didn't have the dates on those, but in total, we had probably three or four meetings at the very most. It's been over eight months with no tangible outcome. The chairman, Jimmy, decided to schedule a meeting for 12/9/24, not to move the committee forward regarding any issues, but to remove two members, me being one of them. Chairman Jimmy directed the council clerk to call some members of the Friday, on Friday, the 12/6/24, to see if he'd have a quorum on the 12/9 meeting. Only certain members were contacted, not all. Myself and a couple of other members never got a call, never got a voicemail, never got anything. So we weren't aware of it. He was doing basically a count to see how many people he was going to have attend. Then on the 9th, which is the day of the meeting, Chairman Jimmy incorrectly determined he would not have a quorum, so he canceled the meeting. His actions were incorrect because there are few of us, we're never contacted to see if we were or not going to be there, so he had no tangible information as far as how many people were going to be at that meeting to make a quorum. In reality, there was a quorum, but just not the members he wanted there to vote on his way. He was stacking the deck to promote his agenda. Even though other members were called by 10:00 AM on that Monday to cancel the meeting, I never got a call. And so 2:00 in the afternoon, I proactively called the clerk to see about the meeting. She told me it was canceled, and other people, once again, were never contacted at all about the cancellation of the meeting, and some even showed up for the meeting that The meeting was rightfully canceled because he claimed there was no quorum. In reality, there was a quorum, just not his voting buddies. There were actually six members available, and only five are needed for a quorum, per the law director. That is a clear case of above abuse of power by a committee chair, and I would expect this issue to be dealt with by city council correctly. Thank you.
Is there any other public participation?
Hello, John Rossington, 5550 Lincoln Highway. Just, I don't know where the city is standing currently on the old YMCA building, but I understand that the mayor had purchased that, hoping it could provide for the future growth of the fire department, which is surely needed. The 1900s building wasn't housing equipment the size of what it is today and what they need. I did have an opportunity to go through that building, and obviously, it is perfect, being the proximity to the building, it's sitting next door. It's not perfect from the standpoint that it's going to be probably fairly expensive to take it down, but I can't see how you can possibly recreate what you've already got, 80% of what you want, sitting there, even if it costs you half a million dollars to knock the old building down for parking or whatever. You just can't do it. You're probably looking, I don't know, four, five, six million dollars to recreate that thing somewhere else. You've already got it. You know, Bucyrus is not the same town it was in 1970, when you had a lot more population, a lot more factories. You know, we had 2,000 people at Temkin, now it's 300. We don't have General Electric, we don't have Swan Hoes. There's a lot of businesses that are gone, so your tax base is eroding as well. I would rather see the city be cautious in their spending. That building has got a recent roof on it, it's not leaking, it can sit there for five years until the city's in better shape to knock it down if they choose to do so. But it seems to me it would be a lot more efficient for people's money if you did accept the gift, if you were to offer it still, and just sit on it, just bank it. You can do it next year, you can do it never, but at least you'll have it. Thank you.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Thank you, Mr. President. Many residents of our community are being left in the dark about what's going on behind closed doors within our city council and government. Our elected officials are playing dirty with just about every issue that have come before them. They have not talked about major issues that need to be talked about in open public meetings. Yet they tabled these issues, or no reports of any of these issues. Why? But they can talk about other things for months that are the least important issues, then come to do something about it, they call a special meeting, then nothing. A three-minute meeting, tabled it. Now it's crunch time. 14 days until the end of the year, and now you want to talk about the budget. Well, citizens of Bucyrus, hang on. The Finance Committee Chairman, Mr. Myers, now wants to bring it out. Has this committee had special secret meetings behind everyone's back? This is possibly true. Have they held private, held these private meetings in violation of the Ohio Open Public Meetings Act? I believe so. They're called serial meetings. It means, however, a public body may not circumvent the requirements of the statute by setting up back-to-back meetings of fewer than the majority of its members with the same topic of public business discussed at each. Did each member of the Finance Committee have meetings with the auditor, the mayor, about the budget? It is very good bet that this was done. That is why the Finance Committee has an ordinance already made up to be voted on as emergency legislation, possibly Thursday night. This was done before it was even talked about in committee meetings, plus the public doesn't even get a say in the matter at all. Now about the pay raises for city employees. 20% increase to everyone but police and fire? Holy cow. City employees make more than county employees do now. Next year, the contract opens up for additional raises. I will agree with the law director on raises for employees that work in the trenches. I suggest a little less than 425 an hour, but not all the other city employees. Maybe a buck, maybe a buck a quarter. The council has a firefighter unit contract expiring at the end of this year, and nothing on this yet. Why? More backdoor deals being done? I'm going out on a limb. Why does the fire department have three captains and six attendants? That's nine officers to nine firefighters. That's one officer to one firefighter. Never heard about this before. Why can't the city hire a part-time firefighter EMTs or firefighter paramedics? If they meet the same requirements, what's the difference? If a full-time firefighter EMT is making $20 per hour and makes $30 an hour in overtime, which the fire department overtime budget is huge, basically, the city could hire two part-time firefighters, part-time employees at 15 bucks an hour. With the looming financial issues that are facing the city, residents should come and offer suggestions on how the city can save money. I don't believe the current financial, finance committee knows what they're doing. They look at, look at the people on this committee, are they trustworthy? Have they committed fraud run next? Are they going to put this city in the red? It is true that the city reserve money is being used up. Will the city have enough money to pay the bills and payroll? Finally, some time ago, a city employee sued the city, got $20,000, and cost the city $50,000 in legal fees. The audiotape that recently came out of this person is very clear. There was intent to commit fraud and deception of the city. Unclean hands is a common law doctrine that prevents a party from receiving a favorable outcome in court if they acted unethically or unjust in reaction to the matter at hand. I believe this is true in this case. The discovery of new evidence in this matter needs to be investigated, with both the state and federal agencies involved. The city of Bucyrus should take legal action in a civil case to reclaim all the cost and interest in this lawsuit. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Ashley Faison, 1207 Dundee Trail. You knew me as Ashley Redwell. You remember me? Okay. I do not know what's going on in here. I do not keep up with it, nor does it bother me. You know, that is not my everyday thing. I've known you since 2011. It was rocky, correct? Right. When you came to my house, when I had the salon there, you came with me, you came to my house for papers, to sign, to petition for you, correct?
No.
I was in your district ward. Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Ma'am. Carolyn.
I did not come to anybody's house with any petition to sign for any--
Okay, we have a point of order. It's been called.
Years ago, you did.
What's your point, Mr. Myers? For the go back and forth?
No, no, I'm asking a question because there was a promise that was made.
Okay, so I have to rule on the point of order.
Okay.
There's not going to be any back and forth with the speaker.
No. Thank you.
Can you continue?
Okay, so, I'll just publicly state, you did come to my house, I had no problems. I gave you the respect no matter our past. I told you that as long as you were sorry, and I asked you, of all people, why you would come and ask me for your support to be on the ballot to be able to petition for here. You told me that you wanted to make Bucyrus a better city. Okay?
I do.
I, I'm sure. I have a past as well. We all have a past. I respected you, and I, and I just said, Carolyn, if that's truly what you want to do, you told me the foundations that you had started and everything. I signed. That's how I know that you were at my house, because it wasn't my, I had a salon at my house. That's why she was there, okay? You broke that promise, bud, because you cannot publicly boycott a small business that makes our community. I own a small business here. Okay? That is not okay. That is the whole reason why I'm here. I do not care about the drama that has happened in this facility. I am telling you from a person that you made a promise to, that you wanted to make a change.
Point of order.
That is not the change.
There, we've had another point of order. What's your point of order, Mr. Myers?
Again, Mrs. Shireman does not have the floor.
Mrs. Shireman, you're going to have to refrain from talking to the speaker's podium.
I thought that people weren't supposed to be pointed out on council by visitors.
I'm not necessarily pointing you out. I'm directing--
Hold up, hold up.
I'm serious about that.
We're going to let the speaker continue. Will you agree to let the speaker continue?
No.
If you don't let the speaker continue, you could be in jeopardy of the council having you removed again.
Well, that's okay too.
Okay, I'm going to hope that you let the speaker continue, and I'm going to start the clock and the speaker's going to continue.
I really don't have much more to say, so she doesn't have to endure me very long. I just wanted to make a public appearance to remind everybody here that small businesses are important. We do make the community. We do have a voice, and if this keeps happening with no repercussions, you're going to see more of me here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Kevin D. Trey, 1505 Edgewood Drive, here about the airport. And the grant we got for the new terminal building from the FAA. Basically, just to give you a bit of an update on that, I contacted a local family, and this family has agreed to match dollar-for-dollar up to $50,000 in private donations that we receive for the airport terminal program. I've talked to some people and so forth. We seem to be getting a willingness of private donations, so I understand the city's financial condition, but this may be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so we're going to do what we can do as citizens and to help to private fund this. The question I have, or I guess a comment I have, is Brandon, and maybe Kaylee, I don't know if we would need to set up a separate entity for this money to go into, so it could be dispersed to the city, this donated money, or what's the best way to handle that? And let me also say, the president of our airport commission is a CPA, so if we can benefit from his input too, even though he doesn't want to come up here, I'm sure we could. So, any thoughts on that? Or we could maybe schedule a meeting and talk about it, but, but like I said, we do have a family willing to put up dollar-for-dollar up to $50,000 match, which is very gracious of them.
Mr. Myers?
I would like to refer this to the Finance Committee to allow you to take the time to research your different options, and then it could be discussed in committee meetings. So I'd like to refer the donation, any donations made towards airport project to finance.
I'll second that. Mr. Myers made the motion to refer it to finance. Ms. Sherrick seconded on favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's going to be discussed in committee.
Yes, sir. Before you go anywhere, while you're here, would you like any help tracking down some money?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Got my office phone?
Yeah, you can pick people up by their feet and have the change fall out. Yep, we're good with that.
All right, I would love to help.
Okay, we, I would like to get together with you and talk, and we can hopefully keep this project moving.
Go.
Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Seeing none, we're going to move on to communications and petitions. We have two letters here, and the council clerk can read them.
We have-- Scott. We have an email from April Payne dated December 16th, 2024. Unfortunately, due to a medical situation, I am unable to physically be at the council meeting. I'm requesting this email be read. For the past several months, the city of Bucyrus has watched the embarrassment that has been city council. First, the council president passed out parts of clown costumes to a constituent and a visitor a few weeks ago, posts on YouTube about city council members and constituents, actions that were so bad that he received a censure. Moments after his censure, he once again became argumentative and started recording visitors yelling "Greg Camera" for Greg White to also record them so they can be a part of Finkhauser's next YouTube video and several posts on Facebook. Next, I want to bring up councilperson Shireman and her actions. Shireman has gone on Facebook and publicly called for boycotts of the local business. Bucyrus is trying to attract more business to town, yet here she is publicly calling for a boycott of a business due to whose family, who the family is. The council president can say she did this on her personal page, but she uses that account to discuss city business all the time, including on the city of Bucyrus page. Again, she, too, was just censured for her behavior towards constituents, and here she is, not only attacking constituents, but an entire business. Councilperson Shireman also refuses to fulfill public records requests, which is part of her job. I am not the only one in Bucyrus ashamed by these actions of my city council. I am calling for the resignation of Kurt Finkhauser and Carolyn Shireman, so they can be replaced with people that have the best interests of the city of Bucyrus in mind. That way, council can finally accomplish more than just being a three-ring circus of entertainment for out-of-town people to watch. We're not just the laughingstock in town anymore. People living in other states also tune in to watch the ridiculousness. Respectfully, April Payne, 402 West Mary Street, Bucyrus. Next is a letter from Wavelength dated December 15th, 2024. The subject line being donation of city tower contract revenues to--
Can that be read with him presiding over the meeting?
No, he's got to give up the gavel.
Thank you.
Go ahead and continue the reading, please. You can start over, actually, so that people could follow along.
Okay. Yep. There's a letter from Wavelength dated December 15th, 2024, subject line being donation of city tower contract revenues to operation of all miller pool. Dear members of the Bucyrus City Council, I hope this letter finds you in good health and spirits. My name is Kurt Finkhauser, and I am the owner of Wavelength, a local ISP based out of Bucyrus. I am writing to inform you and the citizens of Bucyrus of a significant decision my company has made in response to the current financial challenges facing the city, particularly concerning the future of our community pool. As you are aware, the city is grappling with a financial crisis that has placed the continued operation of key public services, including the community pool, in jeopardy. In light of these circumstances, Wavelength is pledging to donate 100% of the annual revenue it receives from its ongoing 2018 tower contract with the city of Bucyrus for the next two years, being 2025 to 2026. This donation will be earmarked solely for the purpose of ensuring that the community pool remains operational, serving as a vital recreational and wellness resource for Bucyrus residents of all ages. I recognize that the community pool is more than a recreation, more than just a recreational facility. It is a space for families, children, seniors, and others to gather, exercise, and foster community spirit. In this difficult financial time, I am determined to help ensure that this important resource is preserved for the benefit of all Bucyrus residents. Additionally, I would like to take a moment to address a matter that has been brought up publicly by former council member Dan Wireball. Mr. Wireball has suggested that my involvement in holding public office is motivated solely by a desire to protect the financial interests of my business. I believe that my decision to donate the annual revenues from my pre-existing contract with the city proves that Mr. Wireball's logic is flawed. This donation is made not with any expectation of financial gain, but as a genuine commitment to the well-being of the Bucyrus community during a time of crisis. In fact, I believe that this donation clearly demonstrates that Wavelength is deeply invested in the success and prosperity of Bucyrus, not only as a business, but as a proud member of this community. I am committed to ensuring that the pool remains open and accessible for the people of Bucyrus, and this action speaks to my company's broader goal of contributing to the public good, regardless of my business interests. The annual gross revenues expected from this donation equate to about $12,000 per year. I realize the cost to operate the pool annually is much higher than that. However, after talking to the city's auditor and law director, I believe there may be a way for Wavelength to make its current donation of the city's internet services through the CIC, or the Community Improvement Corporation, that may allow the city to pay for the remainder of the pool's operating costs through the city enterprise funds. This would ensure that the strained general fund won't be impacted by the operation of the pool for the upcoming years. I trust that the members of the city council, as well as the residents of Bucyrus, will recognize the spirit of goodwill and public spiritness behind this donation. I hope that this gesture will provide some immediate budgetary relief, and I look forward to working together to ensure that the pool continues to serve as a cherished community asset in the years ahead. Please feel free to contact me directly at 419-617-7114 if you have any questions or would like to discuss this initiative further. I am proud to support Bucyrus, and I remain dedicated to the long-term success of this great city. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Kurt Finkhauser, owner at Wavelength.
First off, does anyone wish to make a motion to refer that to any committees?
Do we, I have a question.
Absolutely.
Do we, we don't have to have anything as far as donations. If he wants to donate stuff to the city, he can donate it.
Correct. That's why I'm asking if anybody wishes to move it to any committee for any further discussion.
He's more than welcome to donate anything he wants to the city, but we don't need legislation for that, correct?
Correct. The same rules apply to Mrs. Shireman wanting to donate her salary. Same thing.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Can I make a comment really quickly, just in regards to a portion in the letter? There are a couple areas where it says, ensuring that the community pool remains operational, that would, just so the public knows, that would also depend on the amount of the donation. So if it costs $70,000 to operate the pool that year, we need to make costs, and the donations only equate to $30,000. It's just because in the letter it says, ensuring it remains operational, I just want to say, it's not a guarantee, if we accept the donation, that that would happen. That's all. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, those could go into that fund, and they wouldn't be used for anything else but that pool.
That's what it sounds like.
Yes.
All right. All right. Does anyone wish to make a motion to accept and file the letter?
I'll make a motion to accept and file it.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first by Mr. Moritz, and a second, Mrs. Shireman. Miranda, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Hickman?
No.
Me.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to return the gavel to the president.
You don't even, you don't have to do a motion. It's, it's just a formal, just pass it.
No, I think he has to have a motion. So again, I'll ask, is there a motion to return the gavel to the president?
So moved.
Miranda, would you do a roll call vote, please? I have a first by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz.
Hold on a second. Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
There you go. That's how that goes.
Need a motion to accept and file the letter from Mrs. Payne.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. Roll call vote?
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Accepting, it has passed. Moving on, standing committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. Me.
Let's see, we had the planning commission today. Solar panels and resurfacing went good. We had some clerical errors in resurfacing. They'll be fixed for Thursday, and hopefully, we're good to go for this. That's it.
Any questions for the plating committee? Seeing none, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, Ms. Sherrick?
Nothing at this time.
Any questions for Public Lands and Buildings Committee? Seeing none, Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. DeShawn?
No report at this time.
Any questions for Health and Safety Committee? Seeing none, Finance Committee, Mr. Myers?
No report at this time.
Any questions for the Finance Committee? I have one. Do we have any idea when you're going to hold the first meeting on a 2025 budget?
It will be on the agenda for Thursday evening.
Do you have any timeframe on when it's going to get passed? Because this is actually the last regular meeting of the year tonight.
We are then going to, at some point this evening, I suppose now's a good time, since you bring it up. We need three of us to request a special meeting, special council meeting after the committee meetings, after the Finance Committee.
Okay, can we wait until new business for that?
I was planning on, but you asked the question.
Any other questions for Finance? Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman?
The Tourism Advisory Council met last Tuesday. Wasn't a whole lot of development in that, other than it was just a year-long review kind of thing of what we had done, what we were looking to do. As far as the All Ohio Future Fund goes, I've talked to the administration, and I've talked to Sarah Hurley. We are getting a meeting put together for January 28th. I hope to have something positive come out of that, and if not, I'll let you all know either way. And not this week's committee meeting, but the next Economic Development Committee meeting. I'm looking for the consideration of removing councilperson Shireman from the Economic Development Committee. Do not think it is in good spirits as a councilperson nor an Economic Development member to boycott a business. And I'm not going to let it fly in my committee. And that is the end of my report.
Any questions for the Economic Development Committee? Seeing none, Service Committee, Mr. Moritz?
After about six months of administration going back, revamping the whole Chapter 9 section, also with help of our new law director, I think we're ready to move forth at it. Everybody has the newest version of it, hopefully, the final newest version of it that we've been able to look at for about a week, week and a half, and should be ready to see where we can go with it Thursday.
Any questions for Service Committee? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, chaired by Mrs. DeShawn?
The Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure and Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113 met earlier this evening. And at the request of Law Director Gobrik, the committee decided to pass the Rules of Procedure and the two codified ordinance chapters to Mr. Gobrik to start from scratch. He will prepare new drafts for the three pieces, and then he will have that ready for committee to review and discuss. And as he pointed out during our meeting, this is not something that will be done immediately. It is a big project, and it will take some time. Thank you. End of my report.
Any questions for the Special Ad-Hoc Committee? Seeing none, Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Property Maintenance that Mr. Me is the chair of?
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Me? Seeing none. Special Ad-Hoc Committee for the Zoning Map that Mr. Me is the chair of?
No report.
Any questions for Mr. Me? Moving on, Traffic Commission, Mayor Truca.
No report.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? Seeing none, need a motion to accept committee reports collectively?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's passed. Report of City Officers, Mayor Truca.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Auditor Kaylee Lewis and Dylan Wyatt for saving our OPWC grant funding. The three of us attended the OPWC meeting in Mansfield, Ohio this past Friday, December 13th, where Dylan and Kaylee both testified before the governing body. The funding amounted to $185,000 to be split between the new water line installation and stormwater lines on South Sandusky Avenue prior to the State of Ohio repaving South Sandusky Avenue to Perry Street. The governing board does not usually allow change orders to OPWC grant funding applications. Mark Baker, Crawford County engineer, was also very instrumental in helping the change order to take place prior to the vote on Friday morning. The city of Bussaras does not have enough money in the water fund to allow for the installation of new water lines on South Sandusky Avenue. The $185,000 in grant monies will be spent solely towards the installation of a stormwater line as a part of the $1.5 million stormwater project draining 30 acres on South Sandusky Avenue. The administration, along with Dylan Wyatt, with McKeever and Associates, will entertain bid openings for State Route 4 South and Mount Zion Road Waterline Project on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. This waterline project was made possible by Dylan Wyatt having completed the engineering for this area in the past six months, making this a shovel-ready project. We would like to thank the Crawford County Commissioners for funding the installation portion of the waterline project. The administration would like to remind the citizens of Bussaras of a water line and sewer service insurance is available to offset repair, replacement of leaking, clogged, or broken lines from the point of the utility connection to the home exterior. The coverage is for up to $8,500 per incident. I would like to make the following referrals to the proper committees. I would like to refer ERUs' stormwater fees to the service and the Finance Committees. I would like to refer the reappointment of Floyd Farmer to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a four-year term retroactively to January 1st, 2025, to the Plating Committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we need a motion to refer the ERUs' stormwater fees to service and finance and reappointment of Floyd Farmer to BZA and BBSA to serve a four-year term retroactive to January 1st, 2025, to Plating Committee.
Can we ask the mayor to amend, not just including Mr. Farmer's name, but all of the members of that committee, which I do believe are all up, so that they can be talked about at the same time?
The only one that's up for BZA is Floyd Farmer.
I thought I'd read that there were other others.
I think you're thinking of property maintenance appeals.
It's in my...
My apologies.
I will entertain the motion for what I previously stated.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's passed. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Are you going to have a state-of-the-city report sometime?
Sometime.
Annual state-of-the-city? Okay, moving on, Mr. Safety Service Director Starner. Oh, sorry, mayor.
I would like to go ahead and report out on the Planning Commission.
Okay.
All right. Bussaras City Planning Commission met on Monday, December 17th, 2024. It was requested by the following items that were approved by the Planning Commission, and I'd like to have them submitted to the appropriate council committees. Number one, proposed establishment of Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1193.01, solar panels. The Planning Commission approved the draft legislation without any proposed additions or alterations, and proposed amending Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1189.03, general requirements under Chapter 1189 entitled "All Street Parking and Loading Requirements." The Planning Commission approved the draft legislation with the recommendation that 1189.03(c)(3) be rewritten to read, "All single-family dwelling units shall have, at minimum, a dustless stone parking area with a concrete apron approach, providing access to set parking area pursuant to the standard details for drive aprons on file with the Engineering and Zoning Office." Thank you.
Are those to be referred to plating?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to refer those two referrals that the mayor just stated to plating?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It has passed. Mr. Starner, do you have a Safety Service Director?
I may have.
Can you turn your microphone on?
I may have. I have a question for the law director.
Read this now, or?
No, sir.
No, sir. No report from the Safety Service Director. Does anybody have any questions for the Safety Service Director? Seeing none, Law Director, Mr. Gobrik?
Thank you. Just some general housekeeping matters. I'd like to get ahead of any conspiracy theories that I've heard floating around regarding why the Property Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee was canceled, as well as how it was canceled. I take any and all requests for investigation that I receive seriously, and I give the diligence that is due to each situation. I have found that there is nothing improper surrounding the cancellation of the Property Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee. Human error and human illness. The council clerk was dreadfully sick during this timeframe, if we all remember correctly. Despite this, she did her best, taking proper precautions to power through and facilitate council and committee business during the period that she was ill. I discovered that, and Miranda has acknowledged the same, an error was made on her part regarding communication with committee members. I will note that communication is a two-way street. However, the buck stops with the office of the clerk. Miranda made a mistake while she was sick. That's the extent of it. At no point did anybody reach out to her and instruct her not to contact committee members. But more on the cancellation, there's really no mystery as to why the Property Maintenance Ad-Hoc Committee was canceled. As I understand it, there are supposed to be nine members on the ad hoc, and there were, at the time, seven members. Two of those members were not able to make the meeting, and another member resigned. This left, by my count, four members. I might have the timeframe a little wrong, but that's my understanding. Even if there had been five members at the meeting constituting a quorum of members, the topics of the meeting made it impossible to proceed because despite there being a potential quorum, two of the members were up for removal at the meeting. This means that by parliamentary rules, that the subject of the removal may not vote on their own removal. That means that the effective voting number would have been four, which is less than a quorum, and nothing would have been able to be passed. It is my understanding that the only thing that was on the agenda was the removal of members. Therefore, no other committee business could be conducted, thus making it a moot issue. To further compound the failing of an effective quorum, which needs to be present in order for there to even be a meeting, as previously stated, the only things that could be discussed were the removal of members. The removal of a committee member must be passed by a two-thirds majority of the committee, not just the committee members present. So even if the committee did, in fact, have all available members present, the possible vote would have no chance of being greater than or equal to a two-thirds majority needed, thus further mooting the issue. I will assume there are folks who believe that a recommendation to remove someone may only be a one-and-done thing, and that you can only make it once. And that's not the case. Even if the vote had been cast with a voting quorum present to conduct the meetings, we'd have been right back where we were due to the current politics in those committees. So the solutions that I've come up with after discussion with the committee members and Miranda is that possible solutions here are very simple, and there are only three of them. The first being that we can appoint more members and fill the committee and move on from there. The second being that we can abolish the committee in its entirety. Or third, we can find a way to make our council clerk superhuman and impervious to any ailment or physical strain. So in conclusion on that, I don't know what the big deal is, but I'm aware a lot of folks are bothered by this. I assume everyone, or I assure everyone that there is no conspiracy theory, trickery, nor treachery afoot. The simple explanation is that Miranda got sick, and the purpose of the meeting was impossible. That's the extent of it. As for legal research, I've had a lot of people ask me a bunch of legal questions. I'll get to them as I am able to. There's only one of me, and the law is very, very big. As for referrals, it has come to my attention that the Property Maintenance Appeals Board has three members, has three members' terms that are expiring. Those members are Floyd Farmer, Steve Pfeifer, and Ron Boers. I would like to refer the appointment or reappointment of these individuals and their positions to the Health and Safety Committee to inquire about taking care of this. I'd like to close with some holiday wishes. As my understanding that this is the final regularly-scheduled council meeting of the year, I would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, or whatever such holiday you observe or do not observe. Across the vast majority of cultures and religions that I am aware of, this is a time of goodwill and compassion, as well as celebration. I would like everyone to take time and impart the Bussaras spirit and the spirit of the United States to your friends, family members, and fellow citizens. Above all else, just remember that if Snoopy and the Red Baron can call a timeout for the holidays, so can everybody else. Whatever 2025 has in store for us, it's going to be in store for all of us. So everybody come back after the new year, ready to roll, because I intend to be as productive as possible. That's my report.
I need a motion to refer the Property Maintenance Appeal Board appointments to Health and Safety?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Moritz seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Does anybody have any questions for the law director? If anybody drives past City Hall late at night and you see a little blue car parked out front, that is Mr. Gobrik working, and he has been putting in countless hours. I really appreciate the effort he's putting into this job. And I really think that Mr. Gobrik is going to continue to be an asset for the city of Bussaras.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, moving on to the auditors' report.
On Friday, December 6th, 2024, I had asked to have a meeting with our local government services representative, which is a branch of the state auditor's office, after finding some issues with the water fund. Due to incorrect information I was given during the budgeting last year, some of the anticipated revenue streams have not materialized. Unfortunately, those projects that relied on those revenues coming in were already underway, meaning the Water Works Fund is currently operating in the red. Now, specifics weren't given because 2024 will need to go through the cap conversion process before we have any solid numbers, which we have always contracted with local government services to do. The state auditor did take a quick look over some reports, the detailed trial balance, statement of cash position, and was not overly worried, but stated we need to correct course in 2025. We need to halt large water projects, reduce expenses, and attempt to increase revenues into the water fund. All regarding expenses, I've reflected in the draft 2025 budget. In addition, this is an add-on, guys. It's not in the packet. In addition, I would like to take some time to discuss the outlook of the general fund safety forces. If you will all recall, in January, a presentation was made regarding the spending in the general fund outpacing its revenues. After consultation with local government services, it was decided to move nearly all safety forces expenses from the general fund to the safety forces fund for better budgeting practices. Though that did not truly save us money, it moved the expenses from the general fund and then put them in the safety forces fund, and then we supplemented the difference between the revenues and expenses in that fund with infusions from the general fund. Aside of that, no changes have happened to put the general fund in any better financial position. When the previous auditor left, the carryover from 2022 to 2023 in the general fund was $634,788.25. In 2023 to 2024, the carryover was $615,980.56. And if we were to close our books today, the carryover would be $605,625.1. Remember, in late 2023, there was a large transfer infusion of ARPA money, Fund 271, $424,898.25 the city used to replace fire wages during the large amounts, due to large amounts of overtime, which kept the city staffed at the recommended rate. In 2024, two police officers were completely paid, including all personal services, not just salary, out of an ARPA grant, Fund 266, amounting to $176,602.50. After speaking with the state auditor, I was informed that a lot of cities who used ARPA/COVID money to keep day-to-day services going are running into similar issues now that these federal dollars have dried up. I am currently projecting the revenues in the general fund for 2025 to be $5,357,775, I am currently projecting the revenues in the general fund for 2025 to be $5,357,775, and the expenses budgeted at $5,634, sorry, let me start again, $5,634,448.76. That's a difference of $276,673.76 that we are under. Now, we would still be positive overall by $339,485.51, but we would need to be operating within our, we should be operating within our revenues and not cutting into our carryover. Our carryover has been on a downward slope since 2020. Right around that time, COVID occurred along with closures from local factories impacting our revenues. Now, it is my job to alert council and administration to the situation. I did at the beginning of 2024, no change, no positive change has occurred, not for lack of trying with the property tax levy. Still, here we are, sitting at the end of 2024. We are further down that hole with less time to course correct, so something needs to change imminently. How is up to you? For referrals to finance, the contracting with Auditor of State slash LGS Local Government Services for the 2024 gap conversion services. Thank you.
Need a motion to make the referral?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Meyer seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Does anybody have any questions for the auditor? Um, can you provide that written, what you read after your report that wasn't?
Yes, I can provide that.
Okay, moving on. Treasurer's report dated November 2024.
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Meyer seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is passed. Fire Chiefs, November 2024, fire and EMS report.
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
I second it.
Ms. Sherrick made a motion to accept and file. Mr. Merritt seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Need a motion to accept the city officers' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion. Mr. Merritt seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Visitors input regarding reports of standing in special committees and of city officers. Is there any visitors' input?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. Kaylee, regarding your report, I know we, as citizens, were on the PAC for the levy, and a discussion was brought up that if the PAC wanted to ask, um, council to move it to the May ballot based off of the revaluations that were not anticipated, so I don't know if someone's planning on bringing up a new business today, um, but if that can be revisited as a motion to go to the applicable committee to revisit the property tax levy, I think that would give citizens the time to know how the revaluation is going to affect their city taxes and give the council the ability to put it on the May ballot, um, put the levy back on the May ballot to hopefully offset, so.
It's already an open project.
We already referred to this.
Oh, did you? I'm so sorry. I didn't realize it was already an open project.
Any other public participation regarding the visitors' input of the standing in special committees and city officers? Seeing none. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
Proposed ordinance 39-2024, it's fund creation for the ODOD grant. Amending and supplementing ordinance number 50-2023 being annual appropriations ordinance for 2024 by the creation of a ODOD County Waterline Service TAPS grant subparagraph containing a distribution category containing contractual services line item and a capital outlay line item and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 239-2024, it's the repeal of resolution 237-2024. Uh, it's a resolution repealing Bucyrs City Council Resolution Number 2000, Resolution Number 237-2024 in its entirety and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 240-2024, uh, it's a, uh, appointment for the Bucyrs Public Library. Appointing Nancy McMurray to the position of Bucyrs Public Library Board Trustee, said appointment commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2028, and declaring an emergency. Proposed resolution 241-2024, it's the airport terminal design, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Bucyrs Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrs, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., 8101 North High Street, Suite 150, Columbus, Ohio, 43235, for the terminal design phase project not to exceed $150,000.0. The city of Bucyrs is shared not to exceed, uh, $28,523.0. Further authorizing and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants in payment, therefore, from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to accept this as a first reading?
Salute.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's been accepted as a first reading. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time.
Fred Fisher, 430 Stevens Court, Bucyrs. I would just like to say that on the airport terminal, uh, for another $10,000, of which the city portion would be 500, and I would tell you that I would be more than happy to pay that amount of money. We could get boring samples on the other side to consider an alternate location on the forty-some acres that we are, actually a total of sixty acres we have over there that could not only be, uh, provide future expansion for the airport, but also provide some opportunity for industrial development as well. To do that would be, I think, a smart move, but only if there's going to be somebody that's going to look into alternate funding. If we're just going to continue to, uh, ignore looking at the alternate funding options that are available, then it probably isn't a good idea, but I would hope you would consider that. $500 is a pretty small price to pay for that. Thank you.
Would that necessitate a change in the legislation that we were presented this evening?
Okay, so here, here's the situation with what Mr. Fisher just brought up. We have an ordinance, Bucyrs Codified Ordinance, Chapter 137 dot O6, regarding the Airport Commission. Section C says, "Make recommendations in writing to council, mayor, and the service director relative to the full utilization, operation, and maintenance of Bucyrs Crawford County Airport." And then a couple sentences down, it says, "All recommendations submitted to council, the mayor, and the safety service director by the Airport Commission shall include the written endorsement of the airport manager." So my question is, what Mr. Fisher has just came up here and stated, has this been sent to us as written by the Airport Commission, and has it been signed by the airport manager? If it is not, then we cannot do what Mr. Fisher is asking us because we would be violating our own ordinance here. Is that a good enough answer, Mr. Myers?
The answer is perfectly clear. Um, if I could add, though, Mr. President, is this something that we could just, I know that there's members of the Airport Commission here, but could we send, uh, written communication to them, just asking them for their thoughts, and if they see a need to, to do anything differently based on what we were presented?
Well, the guy that would send us that letter is sitting right back there. If he wants to come up, he could speak right now.
Mr. President. David Shealy, uh, 6016 Annapolis to Cal Road, Tyro, Ohio. Your question specifically? We've, uh, the commission has, uh, taken, I think you, uh, that the commission is established by the council, and the council has done a good job over many, many years of, uh, funding the, uh, the airports and the, and the, the dollars that have come into the airport, uh, from the FAA and the state, I think, have been well spent, and you've had good oversight of that for many, many years. We have in front of us the opportunity, uh, for, that we've dreamed about, really, um, and many people before, uh, there, our current, uh, group have thought about, uh, a new terminal, uh, out there for many years. Think the, um, uh, you know, I think without going through the whole thing on how we got here, uh, you know, we have a situation where the, uh, the, we've had consultants, uh, that we've relied on heavily in the past, and quite candidly, we have our airport manager that we think a lot of, and, uh, and we've had the discussions about the location of the airport. I think everyone on the commission is, is, has the right spirit of, of things, and they're trying to do the, um, you know, the right thing for, uh, for the community. But at this time, uh, we're, we've got, the situation that we have in front of us is, uh, you know, uh, we, we took a, uh, uh, you know, we applied for something last year with the help of CMT, uh, and, uh, and took advantage of the, uh, of an opportunity with the FAA, and, uh, we were told, uh, it was less than 5% when we put it in. But, uh, again, building on a lot of plans from a long, many ti, you know, a long time ago by a lot of good people. And what you've got now is that we, in October, at the end of October, we were basically won the lottery to, to get that, and so that ends up, uh, giving us this opportunity to build the terminal. That quite candidly, uh, I can think of a lot of people, it's been probably forty years that have been waiting for this opportunity. Notwithstanding that, uh, we understand it's still a lot of money for the, the city. You know, uh, and that's why the local businesses are going, are considering trying to come up with the money that Kevin talked about a little bit ago. I do think, um, that said, we, we, the, we really, through all the, you know, all the planning, et cetera, that's been done, uh, we really feel strongly that we know where we want the airport, uh, the, the new terminal to be. I'm not saying it's not with debate, okay, within our own group, but just one right now. And again, everybody's spirit is, is correct on it. I'm not questioning it, that at all. But we need to move ahead with, uh, we have a very limited timeframe, uh, to, uh, complete this, uh, project, and, uh, you know, even though, uh, spending additional money somewhere else, it's still spending money. And so, without a clear, um, uh, benefit to do so. So, you know, from the, uh, from the commission's standpoint, it, it's, it's that simple. We've had the discussion about the benefit to do what's, uh, what, uh, Mr. Fisher's asked, and there's nothing wrong with the, with the ask and the discussion, but we just don't have, have any positive benefit that we could say that it would be worth that. And, you know, and the time is short. We, uh, like I said, uh, we feel like, uh, we, we have just three, three, three and a half months, uh, to move forward with, uh, and if you think about the things that, uh, CMT, when they're, when they have that checklist of things that we got to get done, it's going to be pretty tight. So, uh, you know, it's hard to, uh, imagine that even if it came back with a samples, I don't know what that would do. I don't know where that would help to, uh, to look at an alternative. So from the, from the commission's standpoint, again, uh, is, is, overall, I think we've submitted to, in writing, uh, you know, our, uh, and if we haven't, we haven't, uh, yeah, so.
I don't think that that actually goes here. You asked him to come up and talk.
He's speaking regarding this legislation here, which is exactly what about he's talking about.
You literally requested him to come up and talk. He didn't just say yeah.
Okay. Is there any objection to granting Mr. Shealy an additional five minutes by unanimous consent?
No.
There's no objection?
No objection.
Mr. Shealy, you continue.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, uh, I pretty well concluded, I think. Uh, you know, I, I, you know, welcome the opportunity if anyone has any questions, uh, of anything that I've tried to communicate here. But, uh, right now, I think the, the money is, as been outlined, uh, the, uh, and the, you know, the, the steps are in place and are moving forward. CMT has, uh, graciously been moving forward, even without signing of the contract yet, and that's, uh, very kind of them to, to do that because they know that the time is short. But I do think that we'll be able to complete the, uh, the process, uh, by the deadline. And that, like I said, we, we know, we all know that we have some work to do on, on getting the money for it, and, uh, and we appreciate the consideration that this council is, has given to that. I know it's, uh, I've just got to listen to a few things, uh, here again tonight, so I understand that. But thank you for, uh, for that. Thank you for the time. Uh, and again, being, no other questions, I'll, I'll leave it at that, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other visitors' input regarding the legislation that's been read for the first time? Well, you, we only give people one shot each spot in the, on the game. Yeah, you can come up.
I have some handouts. Uh, let's see, you've got four on the side.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
This curtain made one?
I got one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. In July of this year, I forget.
Name the address.
Oh, Kennedy Tree, 1505 Edgewood Drive. In July of this year, we had a consultant come in and, um, at the bequest of, I believe, the Crawford Partnership, to come in and do an onsite inspection of the airport, airport property, the community in general, and kind of determine, you know, what the possibilities are and so forth. The partnership put it on. Sarah did a whale of a job, as always. She did a fantastic job, except for a couple of malfunctions with the projector, for the screen projector. She did a really good job. But in summary, this consulting firm, I was able to obtain from them their conclusions, which you see on page two. And the highlighted part, uh, once again, this is the consultant that the Crawford Partnership chose. In the highlighted part on page two, it says, "A 176-acre site has two owners, the city of Bucyrs and another individual I won't mention here. While the privately owned land is for sale, the city of Bucyrs property is available for lease only, and leased property is not viable to industrial manufacturing companies. The continuous developable acreage is unknown as no due diligence has been completed on the site. There is no electric capacity at the site. The cost to extend three-phase service to the site with a resulting capacity of two megawatts is $20,000. Similarly, there is no sewer, natural gas, or fiber to the site. Potential extension of sewer would result in only 35,000 gallons per day, which is too low for an industrial user, and extend natural gas would require permission from Norfolk Southern to go under the existing rail line. Fiber is 4,396 feet away and would cost $70,000 to extend the site boundary. There is proximity to rail at the site, which features existing asphalt and grass runways, but the site is located within the airport environs." Second paragraph, "Currently, these gaps render the site as not competitive in the national market for site selection projects currently, small, medium, or large, and it is not a viable industrial manufacturing site for the local economic development community. Insights graded site data template detailing a quantifiable gap analysis has been distributed and discussed with the Crawford Partnership." So what I read from this is that acreage that we have, the city owns, it's not
So, what I read from this is that acreage that we have, the city owns, it's not viable, not competitive for industrial or manufacturing, based on their conclusion. Now, once again, I commend the partnership and I commend Sarah for doing a very good job. I think as, I think as Dave, our council president, and hopefully he can work, or commission president, hopefully he can work, work with you as a CPA and work on the, the fund for the airport terminal and so forth. Everybody's spirit is there, but we just have a little concern about, you know, certain parties want it here, certain parties want it there, as far as the new airport terminal. This is kind of my justification or helps me to determine why I want it where it is. And the fact, if we were to build on the other side, we have roads, which I know there's grants available and so forth, but you have a building and you still have to get to the runway and the taxiway. So we're not only talking a road, we're also talking another taxiway. It'd be a shame to have a building out there in the middle of Beanfield and no way to get to it. So, that's just what I have to say. Any, any questions?
I don't think it's really got much to do with anything, but what Bisciris leases that land, 'cause it, that's not a viable site for manufacturing companies, is that Bisciris' ordinance and laws, or did that come across so much? Because I know, in my experience, I worked on buildings down at Columbus where they do actually lease land to manufacturers to build buildings per, you know, 25 years, whatever they want to lease it for.
Sure.
So I didn't know if that's part of our own codes or if that was-
That I don't know. This is, and this is who the Crawford Partnership-
I was wondering if they come up with that because of-
Yeah.
-that being part of the issue.
Yeah. And there's also setback restrictions because of the runway. You can only build so high, so close to the, to the runway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Deschawn.
Have a question. When Mr. Fisher started to come up and you commented to him that he's only allowed to speak once.
Go ahead. I know where you're going, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, yes. I'm sorry, Kevin. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when Mr. Fisher spoke previously, that was under public participation, was it not?
We're still in public participation right now.
That was the first grade, or grading permission for visitors to speak? That's when Mr. Fisher spoke?
He spoke on the, after the first reading.
He did?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I apologize then. I was trying to write down and keep track, and I didn't do that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were giving everybody their opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. We have a plan before us that has been passed by the Airport Commission. That is what this legislation is. The Airport Commission has approved this plan. So if, if this legislation, 241-2024, is voted on tonight and passed, that is the approved plan that the Airport Commission has signed off on, and I believe Mr. DeTrey, the airport manager, has signed off on as well. That's what was just discussed.
This is later, 3645 Stay Route 4. So I've been talking to Mr. Hickman about the All Ohio Future Fund, and I had been doing some snooping on our city-owned property for a while. The All Ohio Future Fund gives grants to, up to 750 million for industrial, so sorry, industrial improvement, including sites that are underdeveloped or unable to be developed with our current means. And so it's 750 million. I don't know if these two are even compatible, and I don't even know enough about the current plan to, to make any kind of analysis on that, but I've been thinking about this for months, about these two issues being something that could possibly be dealt with together, 'cause I don't know how much is able to be developed, but it is, says here, 176 acres between two owners, and it says it has to be owned and approved by a government entity. So these are being, there are grants available to be carried over. This is not something that has to be done this year, but just something, I don't know if that is, that framework or looking at it from that perspective has even been presented to the, to the partnership. And I do realize that there's a time constraint on this based off of meaning to accept it, but I don't know if that's even feasible, so that's just something of a perspective to give that I noticed. I've been noticing for a bit, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public participation on the legislation that's been read for the first time? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Deschawn.
I have a concern with our resolution that you're going to be reading, 238-2024, dealing with the hourly wage for our council clerk.
What is the concern?
In reading Mr. Gobrik's Law Director Report that he gave on, well, it was dated 12/2, it states that the $4.25 an hour raise, and this has to do with union negotiations, this $4.25 an hour raise is in place of, not cumulative, to the percentage increase that automatically applies at the beginning of the new year.
I know exactly where you're going with this. I have read the legislation for the council clerk's pay raise, and it's $5.25 raise, according to the way it's currently worded. So this would make her getting a dollar more than the other city workers. So do you want to refer this back to committee, or what do you want to do with it?
If we want to change it, that would be the right place to do it.
Okay, then yes, we need to refer this back to the Finance Committee, because we would want to add that $4.25 to the current rate that she's receiving of $20, not the rate that she would be receiving in 2025 of $21. So yes, we need to change 25.25 to 24.25, so I do ask that this be referred back to the Finance Committee.
Miss, you want to make the motion?
Yes, I move that we refer Resolution Number 238-2024 back to the Finance Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Deschawn has made the motion to refer 238-2024 back to Finance Committee. Mr. Myers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is passed, so we don't need to have the second reading or the public participation. Refer back to originating committee. We have 39, ordinance 39-2024 is referred back to Finance. Resolution 238-2024 has been scratched for the moment. Resolution 239-2024 is referred back to Service. Proposed Resolution 240-2024 is referred back to Economic Development. Proposed Resolution 241-2024 is referred back to Finance. Committee report on pending legislation, Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 39-2024, the fund creation for the OD OD grant, and Finance is favorable to proposed Resolution 241-2024, the airport terminal design project.
Service Committee.
Service Favor, Committee is in favor of proposed Resolution 29, or 239-2024 to repeal Resolution 237-2024 as an emergency.
Economic Development.
Economic Development is, is favorable to proposed Resolution 240-2024, the appointment to Bisciris Library.
Okay, further consideration of pending legislation for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 39-2024. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Mr. Myers has made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 39-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers has made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Ordinance 39-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 239-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Resolution 239-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 240-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 239-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Resolution 240-2024 is duly adopted. For a second and third reading of proposed Resolution 241-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 241-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion. Mr. Muritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deschawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Resolution 241-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business? Does anybody have any old and unfinished business? New and miscellaneous business? Does anybody have a new and miscellaneous biz? Well, let's first do the approval of the 2025 Council Committee meeting schedule. Has everybody had a chance to look at this?
Yes.
Any comments?
Need a motion to approve?
We would need a, do you have a comment, Vicki?
No, I'm fine.
Do we, somebody want to make a motion to approve the 2025 Council Committee meeting dates?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded to approve the 2025 Council Committee meeting dates. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved, and back to new business. Does anybody have any new business?
I do, Mr. President.
Miss, yes, Mrs. Shireman.
Can I sit right here and do it, or do I need to go to the podium?
I don't see any reason why you can't stay in your seat.
Thank you. I stand before you today to address a matter of grave concern involved, involving one of our council members, who also serves as the Chair of Special Ad-Hoc Committees. Recently, a video has surfaced revealing actions that are deeply troubling and demand our immediate attention. In the video, the council member openly admits to entering the Law Director's office half an hour early with the intent to locate and copy a document from the Law Director's desk. This document was then used to file a lawsuit against the city, resulting in a $20,000 settlement in her favor. However, the true cost to our taxpayers was far greater, amounting to $70,000, when including legal fees and other associated costs. Such actions not only undermine the integrity of our council, but also betray the trust of the citizens we are elected to serve.
Point of order. What's your point, Mr. Myers?
Personal attack.
Um, in what way was that a personal attack?
Mr. Gobrik.
I don't think that would-
I don't see how this would go under new business.
I'm going to rule that, um-
It's not even appropriate?
Mrs. Shireman can continue to read what she's reading.
It is imperative that we hold ourselves to the highest standards of ethical conduct and transparency. The misuse of privileged information for personal gain is unacceptable and cannot be tolerated. Moreover, the video contains statements made by the council member that raise further concerns. Specifically, the phrase is, "Oh, I am smarter than those people." And this is-
Point of order.
Mr. Me, what's your point of order?
I need some clarification on the point here. Why is, why are we going through that?
I can give that at the end of this.
Talk to Mr. Gobrik.
What, what, what's your actual point? What's your point of order?
It's inappropriate.
You're calling it inappropriate?
Yes.
In what way?
What's, what's the point?
I don't know. Let's get to the end of it and hear.
How about we just find out?
I'm gonna rule on this point of order. Then Mrs. Shireman can continue reading.
I'll appeal that.
I'd like to appeal.
Yeah, you can appeal that.
Then I'll appeal it.
Okay, Mr. Myers has appealed the ruling of the point of order. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Sherrick has seconded. Roll call vote on the appeal.
Myers?
Yes.
Deschawn?
I don't think I should be voting, since it's about me.
You should probably abstain.
Abstain?
Shireman?
No.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, the ruling has been, or the, the appeal passes, so you're gonna have to discontinue reading your letter, Mrs. Shireman, and we're gonna move on to other new miscellaneous business. Does anybody have any other new miscellaneous?
Can I have a continuance on another one, please?
You have something different than what you just read?
I'm asking for a investigation by the mayor and our law director on this video by Vicki Deschawn.
Your point of order was already ruled on, Mr. President.
Okay, so that was kind of related to your letter, so they obviously don't want to hear it.
Okay, so I think we can reasonably say that the letter itself had no pertinence to new business. It was the background for asking for an investigation. I think, I think we can reasonably delineate from the two and say that asking for an investigation is in and of itself different new business than reading it on a letter that was not new business. Does that make sense?
I, I, yeah, it does make sense. I agree with you, Mr. Gobrik.
Is that council business?
That would-
Anybody, who would do the investigation?
I suppose.
Mr., can I answer that question?
Hold on, we're waiting on Mr. Law Director here to answer.
Okay, 'cause I have a question. I have an answer.
So in the past, the preliminary investigation would be done by me and the administration. If it goes to the, if it goes somewhere beyond what we would reasonably deem conflict, then it would have to go to a different authority, such as the county, the state, something of that nature.
So in past precedents, I have- Um, so in past precedents, I have seen in the council notes or in the minutes where the law directors in the past have done preliminary investigations. And so what Mr. Goebert is saying is correct. So are you asking for him to do an investigation, Mrs. Shireman?
Kind of yes, but I want to step farther because I knew this would happen. I've already reached... I've already emailed the lawyers up here.
Hold on. If... If an investigation was asked for, would council have to make a motion and a second and vote on to ask you, or can just one person ask you for the investig... One council member?
So individually, people ask me for an investigation on a lot of stuff. However, I believe what the councilwoman is attempting here is for an official investigation at the direction of council, which would have to be a resolution.
Passing of a resolution? Well, the... The past stuff that I've seen in the minutes before, there was no formal resolution passed when, like, former law directors have done investigations.
That's how it should be done based on modesty.
Mrs. Shireman?
May I continue, please?
Yeah.
Um, I knew this was going to be the reaction, so what I did was I will announce to the council that I have turned this into our state representative for, um, an investigation.
So why is it being brought up now?
Thank you.
That's a fair point.
If it's already been taken above council, why is this even council business?
As I said, if it's already been taken above the city, then there's no investigation for me to do.
And there's no reason to have it in council.
Well, I would disagree, but that's why I went it above.
Then there was no reason to bring it.
Yes, there was.
No, there wasn't.
Did you know about it?
Okay, any other new business?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Myers?
Two things. First of all, um, I would...
Hold... Hold. Mrs. Shireman, hold on. Mr. Myers has the floor.
Point of order.
Mr. Myers has the floor.
I was just answering him.
Mr. Chair, we have a point of order.
What's your point of order, Mrs. Sherrick?
That we've got Ms. Shireman across the room yelling, talking above other people while you've already given them the floor.
Okay, Mrs. Shireman, can you please refrain from talking until you have the floor? But right now, somebody else has a floor.
Exactly, but Mr....
Hold... Hold. Nope. Nope. We're not doing this.
It goes to him, too.
Mrs. Shireman?
It goes to him, too. He will talk to me.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to remove Mrs. Shireman from this rest of the meeting. There's been multiple points of order made.
Mr. Myers has made a motion to remove Councilwoman Shireman from the meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Abstain.
Shireman?
No.
She can't vote on her own.
Well, they should have asked me.
Muritz?
No, because I've got like two more minutes.
Sherrick?
Hopefully.
No.
Hickman?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there's three yes votes to remove Ms... Mrs. Shireman, and that does not meet the minimum that is required to remove Mrs. Shireman, so Mrs. Shireman is going to remain in the meeting. And we are back to new business. Does anybody have any other new business?
I do.
Yeah, as I was starting to say, I'd like to be one of three council members that's needed to request a special council meeting at the conclusion of the committee meetings on Thursday evening for the purpose of discussing the 2025 budget as well as the bill and manpower ordinance.
I would like to be number two.
I would be number three.
Okay, so Mr. Myers, Ms. Sherrick, and Mr. Hickman have requested a special council meeting. Is that all, Mr. Myers?
On that point, yes, sir.
I believe we also need the appropriation, the reduction of appropriations.
I will amend my request to include the 2025 budget, the bill and manpower, and the appropriation reductions.
So this... This actually doesn't have to be voted on. Any three members of council can request.
Correct.
You just have to make sure that the special meeting is specifically states in the media notice what exactly the meeting is for. I'm going to trust that the council clerk is going to handle that. Is there anything else, Mr. Myers?
I have one more. I would like to refer after discussion with the administration, again, refer the sale of public buildings and property to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance.
Second.
Is there any specific properties or just all?
Um, would you like me to specify?
There's a pretty big list.
Do them all.
Okay. Well, there were some other ones, so if it's okay to leave it vague that way, then it can be discussed.
Leave it vague so any can be discussed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so Mr. Myers made a motion to refer sale of city properties to public lands and buildings. It was seconded by Ms. Sherrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else, Mr. Myers?
I...
No, sir.
Ms. Sherrick, do you have something?
Yes, I do. I would like to make a motion for censure of Ms. Shireman with the addition to that of having her removed from all committees if she's censured due to her outbursts tonight, due to her stuff online, due to her attack of local businesses. Like, it's not acceptable behavior.
So you can make a motion for censure. However, each committee is going to have to start the removal process.
From what I read on the censure, if it's done through the censure that they can be removed, because that also is the fact that Mr. Finkhauser would then have to place people into those committees. That's part of his job is making sure that there are the four people on each committee.
Okay.
Um, where did you see that it's in there that you said that censure can remove from committees?
Yeah, we've got Robert's rules. Where's it at?
That's what I was looking for.
You want to have a recess?
I don't think it's necessary. She's just going to give me a page number?
It's in the stuff I sent you before because it was looked up online. There was no page number.
You had to say two minutes, didn't you?
Do you have a book? With formal disciplinary procedures.
Now we have to defer to Robert's rules.
It was with the formal disciplinary procedures part.
I've read through that whole censure thing, and I don't ever recall seeing anything regarding committees.
But also in the spirit of due process, what's the big deal about having each committee do it?
I agree with Mr. Goebert.
Well, then I would like to make sure that on my next committee agenda that I have the removal of Mrs. Shireman from my committee.
You can do that, but we still have to deal with this.
What we're doing with the other.
So Mrs.... Ms. Sherrick has made a motion to censure Mrs. Shireman for what? What were the exact things?
For the attacks on local businesses, for the attacks on council people online and tonight, for the multiple points of order and the disruptions even after.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hickman has seconded. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Shireman, do you want to say anything in regards to those accusations?
I sure would. First off, how did anybody know about my post about Randy's tire when I took it down immediately after? So you all would have had to come over into my Facebook page, okay? All the groups that I posted that in are my groups that I created.
Point of order.
I'm giving you a...
Mr. Me, what's your point?
She's supposed to be addressing us, not the crowd.
I'm addressing all of you because you're all involved.
The crowd.
Okay, so...
Don't tell me what to do, Mr. Me.
The ruling on Mr. Me's point of order is that, Mrs. Shireman, you can continue to... You are allowed to have discussion and defend yourself on the censure. However, please direct it towards the legislative body.
I'm so glad I brought these papers. I like to be well informed, too. Okay, here we go. The primary role of the committee chair is to provide leadership and ensure the efficient functioning of the committee. Here are the main responsibilities and purposes of the committee chair.
What's your point of order?
Not relevant to the question that was stated.
This is part of my, um, arguing my censoring in that.
Okay, I'm going to rule and allow Mrs. Shireman to continue.
I thank you. Here's, um, six things that should have been done in each committee by the chair within the first year. There's supposed to be leadership and direction. There's supposed to be meeting management. There's supposed to be... Excuse me. Point of order, I don't think that you two are allowed to talk among each other when I'm talking. You guys do that quite often.
Okay, I'm going to rule on the point of order and state that Mrs. Shireman has the floor.
Thank you. Um, communication, oversight, and accountability in conflict resolution. Now I'm going to go on to what I have to say in my defense. I stand before you today to address my removal from the... Well, I guess it's four committees now.
Specifically, this is about censure, so...
Yes, but this is also they're going to have me removed.
Boy, that's for another discussion at the committee meeting.
This is what she wants to vote on right now.
That hasn't...
No. No, she's not voting to remove you from committees right now. This is only about censuring you for those items that she stated, but this...
Okay, so then I will say this in my, um... None of these chair members know their own rules of procedure. They have failed them. They have proceeded on... And every... I have no chance of ever winning a vote and staying in a committee. Why? Because every one of these that would be voting against me are in the hate group. That includes... Yes. Vicki DeShawn, you have told me time and again that you look in these hate groups, but you do not comment. So with that being said, that is, I... I re... I gladly remove myself because I want no part of a ball and chain committee they run.
I have to ask for a clarification. Are you... Are you removing yourself from...
I'm removing myself from all of them right now.
Thank you. I'll second that.
I bet you do, Ms. Sherrick.
You voluntarily remove yourself from a committee. There's no need for a vote for them. The motion to censure is still on the table, and it's still during the discussion of it, so are you done discussing it?
Yes, sir, I am.
Is there any other discussion on it, or we'll proceed to vote?
As a law director, is it just... Can we censure for things outside of chambers?
No.
Absolutely.
Again? Okay, then, all right.
Oh, my gosh, if that's the case.
It's in Robert's rules.
Any other discussion on the censure before we have the vote? Okay, we're going to proceed with a roll call vote on the censure of Mrs. Shireman.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Abstain.
Shireman?
I know.
She still has to say she abstains.
Uh, Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
So we have enough votes. It's, I believe, five there, so the censure does pass. And any other new miscellaneous business?
Yes.
Mr. Starner?
The administration had a... I'm sorry. The administration had a wage reopeners with Ask Me Union. We negotiated a $4.25 raise. Um, we would like your voice vote to approve this.
Mr. Goebert, does this... Does this mean we would not have legislation on it then? Or is this a preliminary vote?
What I understand, there is no legislation on this, on the Ask Me.
So if we vote... If this passes by a four vote, does it automatically go into effect?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Well, I'm trying to remember when I was the law clerk, and I would type the legislation.
So there's already an existing contract. This is a unique situation. This isn't for the full Ask Me contract for three years. This is just for the last third year that they had originally wrote to be determined on when they negotiated it two years ago, so...
And we've never had that.
I think what Mr. Starner is getting at here is we probably... We possibly don't need legislation because the original contract's already been approved. Does that sound right, Mr. Goebert?
Correct.
So, Mr. Starner, you asking for us to make a motion and a second and a vote to approve the $4.25 raise?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to leave it to council, one of the members, if they would like to make that motion.
I got a question first.
Mr. Muritz?
Has that already been added into the budget already if we do that already?
In the draft budget as it currently stands, yes.
Still waiting on a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers has made the motion. Mr. Hickman has seconded it to approve the $4.25 raise for the Ask Me, which would be only the remainder of the last year of the contract. Roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
No.
Shireman?
No.
Muritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
No.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
We have four votes in yes and three votes for no, so it does pass. Is there any other new miscellaneous business? Mrs. DeShawn?
Um, yes. There's been several emails back and forth with Adam Heinlein, who is president of the...
Ma'am, before we get too far removed, may I step in?
Sure.
May I, before?
Yes, Mr. Goebert.
Thank you. As for Councilwoman DeShawn removing herself from all the committees, I feel I have...
You mean Shireman?
Yeah, Shireman removing herself from all the committees. I feel I have an ethical responsibility to ask her some preliminary questions. Um, these are not meant to attack or degrade, but I think that they should be asked. Are you feeling lucid?
Am I feeling what?
Lucid.
What do you mean by that?
Do you feel like you're all there? Like you're in your right headspace to make that kind of decision?
Oh, absolutely, I am. I want no... I absolutely want no involvement with these people in these committees in this council.
Okay. Are you currently under the influence of anything? Has anybody?
I suggest you ask those questions to my attorney.
Okay. Has anybody threatened you? I just want to make sure that this is a big decision.
It is a big decision.
We don't let people do this kind of stuff in court.
You make it... Listen, this is decision. I would never, ever have a chance by a vote to stay in these committees. I have not missed... I have not missed committees. Actually, the committees haven't even been going on to accomplish anything, and I've been to them until I've had my doctor's medical excuse. So, nothing has been done in the year that they've all been in the chair.
I'm just making sure that this is what you want and looking out for your insurance.
Absolutely, yes, and I will... I will make sure my attorney knows how to handle that with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Back to Mrs. DeShawn and her letter that she's talking about.
Yes, several emails with Mr. Adam Heinlein, president of the Bratwurst Festival, Inc., where he's asking just an inquiry as to when the festival would be getting an answer to what the city would be proposing to charge for services for this year's festival, meaning 2025. So, I would like to make a motion to refer the... I guess it would be the Bratwurst Festival.
Charging of services?
Safety forces and cleanup services to the finance committee.
I'll second that.
Mrs. DeShawn has made a motion to refer that. Ms. Sherrick seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Any other new miscellaneous business? Mr. Mertz?
I believe while we're on a selling subject with properties, this is not property, it's under my... I have been told, it's my opinion, that the old fire truck is all gutted out, can't use it anymore. Maybe we should put that up for sale, too?
We are. Administration do that without us.
We are doing it.
Okay, good, go.
So, we have to have public auctions or internet bidding, and to do the internet bidding, we have to pass... There's some legislation once a year that has to be passed to allow the internet bidding. We don't... We never did it this year for the internet bidding. So, would we want to refer the internet bidding to...
Do it first thing next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that... Or it's not like Mr. Mertz is making that motion. I'll second that.
Well, we could put it in committee.
Yeah, because that's what I'm saying. He'll make that motion and send it to committee. I'll second that.
I'll make that motion.
To finance committee?
Finance committee, yes.
Okay, Mr. Mertz has made the motion. Mr. Myers seconded it to refer internet auctions to finance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any other new miscellaneous business? I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait a minute. Referrals. Almost forgot.
ERU stormwater fees to service and finance, appointment of Floyd Farmer to the BZA and BBSA, to plating, appointment of Floyd Farmer, Steve Piper, and Ron Boers to the Property Maintenance Appeals Board to health and safety, contract with the Order of State for the LG... Contract with Order of State Local Government Services for 2024, gap conversion services to finance, donation toward airport project to finance, SARS-codified ordinance 1193.01, solar panels to plating, SARS-codified ordinance 1189.03, general resourcing to plating, the sale of public lands and property to public lands and building, Bratwurst Festival, safety forces and cleanup services to finance, and then internet auctions to finance.
Now I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Mr. Myers made a motion. Ms. Sherrick seconded it all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. We're adjourned at 8:53 PM.